Having a quorum, March 21st minutes. Anybody have any issues with those? All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All of the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Derek, for making that motion.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
Yes. All right. Now, the hour being after 7:10, we have a continued public hearing for Lincoln Estates. And we have the applicant and their entourage of engineers. So, are you setting up? Uh, Rob, or?
I lost my eagle.
Did you sell it when you put everything up on eBay?
I did. I got nothing really to set up.
It's a fancy setup.
I think someone stole it, to be honest. Do you like the start of your all? You just want to hear.
I can start if you want.
Go ahead.
So, for the record, Rob Truax, GLM Engineering Consultants. Since our last meeting, we provided you with some revised plans, revised stormwater report, gave you an updated gravel removal operation plan. We also, I did, you know, recalculated the gravel removal. It was approximately a 15 percent, I think I called it a 16 percent reduction. We originally, if you went by the old chart that Gemma had done, Rob Gemma had prepared, the original was about 523,000 yards, reduced to 437,000 yards. That's using the three-to-one slopes rather than the two-to-one, I think we discussed that before. And we gave you an updated gravel removal, which really didn't change much in the sense of trucking and whatnot, it's still the same amount of trucking, you know, 40 trucks per day, I believe it was. You know, and things to take care of the site, sweeping the road, et cetera, putting in a access. So, we do have a proposed access road, which we're going to pave the first, I think it's 150 feet of the road going in from Lincoln. And then we're going to do the rubble strip, so that the trucks shake off, and then they go on the pavement, then they go out to Lincoln Road. The plans depict the staging area, which is up there on lot, which is actually lot three and a half lot two. So, in the gravel removal, we're paving this piece of road, and then we're going to have a grid wrap area where the trucks would run over to shake off the dust and whatnot as they go out of the site. That's pretty much it. I went through Carl's comments, I know Carl has a new letter that came out today. I didn't see anything in there that was earth-shattering. Some minor things left that he'd like on the plan, which we wouldn't have a problem doing as a condition of approval. And, you know, prior to anything, prior to signing, endorsing the final plans. So, I think with that, Mr. Chairman, I really don't have much more to add.
You're a little short.
Yeah.
Thank you for being short. All right, I got a bunch of stuff here to read. First off, we've got a letter from Merrick and O'Connell. It's to represent the Sportsman's Club. And what it is, is it's a five-page, at least a five-page backup to what was read at the previous one, in that they talked about some court cases that have already been talked about, that they presented last time. So, rather than read it, the attorney had already discussed this during the time, and this is the backup they've given us, just so we have, you know, when he presents it too fast, you gotta write it, you don't have the time to write it down. So, what we have, it's dated April 12th, and it's writing to us on the remand of the 24-lot subdivision, and he represents the, like I said, the Walpole Sportsman's Club and everything here, what is, was everything he talked about during the hearing. So, as I'm concerned, he's just backing up what was said, so rather than read it, if they have that, all right. Uh, let's see, Walpole Police Department.
Can we get a copy of that, Mr. Chairman? Do you have an extra?
I think I have.
I have an extra copy.
Yeah.
Copy fees? Yeah, you'll just pass them on and add 50 percent.
I can copy. I think it's all right, Mike. You go through. I got a copy. I just was looking at the back end of it.
You're welcome. All right, Walpole Police Department, this must have been a big one, because it's the first time in all my years here, we got it from the chief, Ricky Keller. This department has reviewed the plans related to pending development of Lincoln Estates. The issues surrounding proximity to the Sportsman's Club and potential violations of Mass General laws, chapter 269, subchapter 12E have been addressed in our previous comments, and also by town council. As such, we don't have any additional issues with the location in relation to the Sportsman's Club. With regards, with regards to truck traffic leaving the site during construction, we do see potential safety issues with larger commercial vehicles exiting the site onto Lincoln Road specifically. Trucks leaving the site on a regular basis will be forced to navigate Lincoln Road, which is fairly narrow in width. We'd like to see measures taken to ensure the trucks accessing the site can enter, exit safely without risking potential crash with traffic on Lincoln Road. It will be our request that the entrance to the site be wide enough to allow trucks to make a safe left turn without having to stop and back up and make the swing from the site. We also request adequate signage on both sides of the site, warning the truck traffic will be exiting and entering on the roadway. An inquiry was made about the left-hand turn, I don't know where this come from, but, so the site, from the site, I'm sorry, that the trucks were only turned onto Lincoln Road. Though the thought being they would not have to cross a lane of traffic that has limited sight distance, also there's less residential homes on south side, thus causing less disruptions to residents, I agree this would be an ideal situation. I respectfully request that the board encourage developer or any contractors to make every effort to leave in that direction without full truck exclusion. And that has been approved by Mass Don. I don't believe this can be enforced legally. But, that's that one, and, okay, we got, wanted to bring up the old, since we're still dealing with stuff from the past, I just want to remind you here that there's some deputy chief, when he was deputy chief, Paul Barry, back in November 18th, '21, we just talking about the road. He just wanted to say that we got back information, town council indicated the disputed easement is not ours to solve, but because the existing road has been in use for many years, we can't ignore it. Existing dirt road will be the access on the subdivision plan. My question, since this access is in play in many other areas, oh, I'm sorry, this is what I asked him, would you require it to be 20-foot wide? This is what I wrote to town council, and what deputy chief Barry was, is if the existing road is altered, you gotta comply as set forth in 527 CMR, chapter one, and subchapter 18. So, the same as before, you knew that, because that's come up tonight. And the last one, other than what you guys had submitted to us, is, oh, we do have something that you, I guess you sent to Deputy Chief Alan Hover, and you sent something from Kimberly Horn, a, what do you call it, a whole bunch of stuff, you're a traffic consultant, correct?
Yes.
Bill Scully?
Yes, Bill Scully.
Just, nothing to do with this, this was his company? I thought it was something else.
Nah, yeah, he's.
He's with, Scully is with Kimberly Horn now. It's not his company.
Oh, okay, that's, I just.
He's moved around a couple of times.
All right, so what you sent to the deputy fire chief, and it went on April 15th, so he has it now, and what he said there is, on Thursday morning, April 18th, Walpole Fire Department received a multi-page submission from Kimberly Horn and Walsh Brothers begun the proposed subdivision Lincoln Estates. Walpole Fire Department has not, has had not sufficient time to review this submission or the turn analysis submitted on April 15th, 2024. However, after briefly reviewing the turn analysis, the truck provided is not our tower ladder, which is used for the access. So, he hasn't had time to review it, plus what he said is, whatever they submitted is not the proper, the town.
We saw that.
You already seen this? Okay, well, just this for everybody here. I'm surprised all you engineers don't have that stapled hip wall, that.
Why?
The tower, because it happens on all of these, we've had more of these, more and more all the time.
I mean, Bill Scully's been using the same truck turn analysis on all the projects he's done in town?
Yeah.
I don't know if the one that is showing him now, is it, I don't know if they got a new fire truck, a new ladder truck, is, what he's saying, it's not the same one, and it's the one he used on previous jobs that was given to him by Paul Barry some time ago, maybe like four or five years ago, so you know, I don't know if they've got a new truck.
All right, so.
Couldn't tell you.
So, he can't comment, comment on the turning right now?
Well, he did comment on it.
No, he said he.
In a previous letter, I thought he did.
Yeah, but this had to be, but you just submitted something to him, and he hasn't been able to.
Correct.
Review it, so he's going to have to come back at some point and tell us, right?
He can, yep.
Okay. Let's see. Is it police? I had Carl's here, I did this memo, and the previous Paul Barry, the last one, it's been submitted from any town board or whatever, it's Carl's. And do you want to hit the high spots, Carl?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I did deliver a letter today, it's very similar to the prior one. There are a few leftover issues, as, as Mr. Truax discussed, we still have some labeling issues on sheets one and three, mostly to have clarity. There is one significant comment related to sheet three, and it has to do with the 46-foot-wide access at the end of Ava Drive, which goes to the Sportsman's Land. I note that the section of the subdivision rules and regs that actually require that, but they give discretion to the board whether you want, you want to have that provided to adjacent land or not. I also note in my comment that at the last meeting, the Sportsman's attorney testified that they didn't want it. I do note that it's still on the plans currently, and I think before we finish tonight, there should be a decision about that from the board. I was advocating, you know, in my earlier letters, I advocated for it, but I'm not sure that I would if the Sportsmans don't want it. Ultimately, it's the decision of the board. I have noted a few things about a detail for a group mailbox and some labeling on the details for the light poles, Mr. Truax put the things on that I wanted. There are still some legacy issues from the earlier plan, with the plan and profile on sheet 14 and 15, and some of the drainage and depths of the water mains, so there's a few comments about that. I do note in the stormwater report that either the report has to change, or some slope on one of the pipes on the plan would need to change. This is just making sure that the pipes have sufficient capacity in the biggest storms and do not surcharge. I looked at the gravel removal plan, I agree with Mr. Truax's summary, all right, that it's almost identical to the last plan that we had, I believe it was October 20th or 21st, 2021. I do point out in the letter that a couple of things have changed, the volume's actually more now, and that there was an adjustment in the swell factor, swell factor of the gravel, that's how much the gravel puffs up when you load it, dig it out of the bank and load it. And other than that, there are no changes. At the end of the letter, I suggested a couple of conditions, and it has to do with the applicant either providing paving or providing funds for paving on Lincoln Road. There's a piece of Lincoln that's older than the rest of it, we noted that, that's between Daisy and Deerfield. It's changed a little bit since the original review in 2021, where we're down, you know, the pavement has deteriorated some. I also note that whichever trucking route it goes over, the upper part of Lincoln Road's about seven years old now on the pave, and the trucking will beat it up, so I've also asked for funds to be provided by the applicant, and that two times may differ, the first suggested condition would be more upfront, the second one could be after a little bit of time goes by. And that's it, I'd be glad to answer any questions the board or the chair has, or the applicant.
Okay. Now, so many pictures here. I got one, okay, I'll read the one. Sent a bunch of questions to our attorney, which he answered, and I'll read them now, so everybody knows. All right. First question was asked, is Walsh bound to correct all items in the denial? Walsh is not bound to correct all items, the matter was mediated by the court, appointed mediator, primary focus on the gravel. The court ordered it remanded, the court specifically stated Walsh was entitled to rely on materials and evidence submitted previously to planning board as part of the proceedings, along with any additional evidence they want to give. Board considering the remand application can run its decision on remand, it may require compliance with all applicable subdivision regulations. Can Walsh ask for waivers on all items in the denial? Response, Walsh can ask for waivers in any instance where the plan does not comply with subdivision rules and regs. The board can include conditions in the decision to ensure compliance. Does the board have to grant waivers? All right, that's a different one, I'll read it anyway. Does the board have to grant waivers on items in the denial? Response, the planning board can't exercise discretion granting waivers. A denial of the remand application will immediately return the case to land court. I anticipate Judge Foster would quickly schedule that trial. If there are any items in the denial that can't be met, is this cause to deny again? Response, if it is not possible to condition approval of the plan to be in compliance with the regulation, the board may deny the plan for failure to comply. The board can exercise discretion in granting or denying requests from the waivers, from the regulations, but should also consider, in those instances where imposing the conditions would be sufficient to make the plan compliant. Specific item, I'm sorry, specific item denial and cannot be met is the staking of land, that's what we had before, you have to stake it ahead of time, right?
You're ahead of time now.
And there, as long as you've been here and I've been here. This is a requirement, however, our position, the staking can be done at any time, in addition, mediation process, the board was provided the opportunity to walk the site. Are all the items from the last here on the table? As stated above, Judge Foster specifically stated Walsh Brothers entitled to rely on materials and evidence previously presented to the board as part of the original proceedings, along with any additional evidence. Can new items be brought up that weren't part of the initial? Walsh is allowed to submit any additional evidence that wishes to provide. The board can review new evidence in accordance with the regulations, provided that such review would not duplicate the board's prior conducted, prior review conducted and considering the original application. The original traffic analysis did not include truck traffic, and they indicate over 30 trips is going to be had. Is this a given? Is this a must on what's, I'm sorry, I asked, since it tips over the 30 trips per our rules and regulations a day, will they have to do a revised analysis? And what it said is, unless the Walsh Brothers submits an updated traffic analysis, it will need to rely on the original. You didn't do it originally, right?
An updated one?
No, you, my question was, in our rules and regs, if you don't have more than 30 trips.
You don't need.
You can't. But, since we didn't even talk about the trucks, did your original analysis have more than 30 trips shown?
I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that's why I asked the question. This one is, given the grade change directly affects the amount of gravel removed, are they bound to present new gravel removal management plan? And you've already kind of done that.
Correct.
We'll call it new, but.
Updated.
Updated, yeah, okay. Given there's upwards of 30,000 round trips carrying weights of 80,000 pounds on the back roads, what are our options if the road gets destroyed? My opinion, the board may require security such as a bond for the performance of the condition of approval requiring the applicant to repair any road damage caused by the removal, which is kind of what Carl said, right? We allowed to restrict traffic to right turn on Lincoln Road as the number of houses both in the off-rack and Walpole are limited, and due to the fact it's only train tracks on one side. His response is, the planning board can't place a condition to this effect. Section 3 indicates that all deeds, uses, and easements, such as a road to the gun club, I'm sorry, I'll read it again. Section 3A indicates that they have to give us all deeds and that stuff, right? Easements, the gun club has an easement, so they say Walsh denies the easement exists. How do we handle? Walsh is certified that, part of the application process, that had good title to the property in question, and unencumbered by an easement for the road in question. The planning board is not responsible for certifying Walsh Brothers' title. The gun club asked to intervene in the initial stage of litigation, the court denied and determined that the gun club was not party of interest, a party of interest at this time. The court added that the gun club could certainly appeal any approval. So, we got rid of that one. Section 3, 1B, says all work must be completed within two years after bonding. What happens if they can't? If they cannot complete the gravel removal for all road drainage as depicted within two years, it will need to come to the board for an extended period of time or file a new Per the original, this goes back to the Paul Barry one, per the original fire department comments, it was stated, so long as the existing roads from the gun club are not touched, it would be considered grandfathered, no improvements needed. The present plan shows the road on the south side being at the split, being removed, and leaving only the present inbound road. How do we proceed? We can't shut down access, I don't believe we can come with third party to pay for upgrade. What do we do? The planning board could certainly consider the comments of the fire department, however, where the applicant can demonstrate record title to the land being subdivided, unencumbered by an easement for the road access in question, settling disputes concerning the right to use and maintain a road beyond our jurisdiction, and as previously stated, it would be up to respective landowners at the discretion whether to pursue it or not. What is your opinion on the massive gravel case law as presented? And my view says there's nothing to say that 24 houses must be built to level out the property, with the gravel being extreme value. I understand we had an agreement, but would this excess gravel be considered a mining operation under a special permit according to our zoning? And for us, this comes back, our subdivision rules and regs may limit the earth to which is necessary for the construction of roads, drainage, and utilities. And it goes on to say about the zoning laws, that has nothing to do with us, that pursuant to 5D, if there's only violas, excavations are filling incidental residential buildings is an exception to a special permit requirement, but you'll still have to go through that. So, basically, back to what we started with, is you're allowed to build like we've been going through, take the dirt.
With that grading.
Yeah. And that's chosen as a 500 rule for gun charge, discharge from, gun discharge from homes, does the plan have to take that into account and not make it someone else's issue? As stated before, in the August 3rd legal opinion, the planning board is not responsible to ensure the subdivision laws do not conflict with adjoining uses of land. There's no apparent provision in subdivision regulations requiring a buffer. All right, if gun noise, regarding the gun noise, as it existed for many years, is it up to the developer to construct a plan that limits gun noise? And the response was, as stated, Walsh is not required to construct a plan that limits gun noise. The subdivision rules don't require a buffalo, buffalo, buffer, yep, buffalo zone. Is the board liable for cost incurred by the gun club in proving a plan that changes access, houses, and all sorts of stuff? No, the board is not liable, the gun club will have to appeal on their own. So, those were all the questions we had, at least I had in the past, so it clears up a lot of them, just so you understand. Now, we do have from our consultant, is, he's taking a look at the gravel, and Rob, do you want to talk to it, or do you, or do you want me, or what do you want?
Anyway, go anywhere you want, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I do think that, as Carl did, I reached the conclusion that could be agreed.
Do you want to come up to the microphone?
Yeah, you got to come up.
On the gravel removal, I concluded that the plans and the estimates that Mr. Truax provided were consistent with what we looked at last, last summer and fall, as we looked at a compromised road profile. So, it's consistent with that. And then, I did review the Walsh Brothers' gravel removal operation plan. I think that formed, you know, generally a reasonable basis for the work to proceed if it, you know, if it gets to that point. But I do think there are some conditions that the board could consider that, you know, could protect the roads and make sure that the gravel is removed responsibly, without causing too much of a nuisance to the people who reside in the, in the neighborhood. And I listed several conditions for your consideration in my letter.
Okay, I'll read them then, several. Okay, I'll go quick. And just for the applicant's benefit, I forwarded that to Tom today, so I didn't forward it to either Carl or to the, or to the applicant, I was going to let Tom handle that. Okay, first one, prior to beginning off-site trucking activities, the applicant should provide the planning board a survey evaluation of all the roads proposed to be used for export, and document the general condition of the pavement along the route, specifically any structural deficiencies in the pavement, any bridge or covered crossings. Such documentation shall identify where we already have issues, which makes sense. Prior to, prior to beginning tree removal, the applicant must give us a stormwater pollution prevention plan, the swept, and proof of coverage under the U.S. EPA, NPDES general permit. The applicant should be given the town engineer an anticipated truck route, and notice should be given anytime they change. The applicant should be liable for any damages result from the export activities and public waste that town. Damage observations shall be made by the town engineer and reported to the planning board. The applicant shall be obliged to complete the repairs or post a cash surety amount to complete the repairs. Failure to complete repairs will result in the stop work and until repairs are made. No excavation, machinery or hauling truck shall be allowed to sit idle more than 15 minutes on the site. Prior to tree clearing, limited work as defined by the grading plan should be staked by a professional land surveyor with high visibility. Construction security fence should be installed along the limits to prevent accidental injuries occurring from residents or trespassers, and no trespassing signs shall be posted at least at 50-foot intervals. A locked security gate should be installed at construction points of entry and locked at the end of the day. Prior to construction, the applicant shall submit a construction schedule timeline to planning board, the schedule shall be updated and re-submitted each month until the binder coat pavement is in place on all roads. The applicant shall designate a project superintendent that will be, have a 24-hour, seven-day basis response to any issues there, and the cell phone and email address should be given to the planning board, but, and also town engineer and a building inspector. The applicant shall designate. The applicant shall designate and gauge at its expense an environmental monitor whose qualification shall be approved by the board. The environmental monitor, monitor shall experience in road and site construction, wetland, and resource protection, noise and dust control, and the environmental monitor shall provide a cell phone number and email address to the planning board, and they should be available on a 24/7. The environmental monitor shall conduct weekly inspections of site and off-site trucking routes and shall prepare summaries of reports or findings. They also should perform inspections after rainfall events that exceed one inch in 24 hours or an inch and a half in 48 hours, and shall include any photos. Prior to tree clearing, onsite construction, pre-construction onsite meeting shall include the environmental manager, the site superintendent, and the representative from the town designated by the board, and the purpose of the meeting for all parties, review the scheduled truck routes and existing conditions. Parking hours should be limited to the hours of seven to three with no excavation of gravel export allowed on weekends or holidays. No diesel engines should be operate prior to 7:00 a.m. or after 5:00. No dump truck or trail dump shall be stored overnight. No more than 40 trips of vehicles exporting materials from a site may occur on any working day approximately from seven to three. Site superintendent shall keep a daily log of earth exports and include the number of trips by each truck and identifying the registration, the time they departed, and destination. The logs also should be given to the planning board upon their request. Prior to the earth material export, the first 150 feet of Avon Lane begin in the intersection of Lincoln Road, shall be fully constructed to binder coat and include a 12-inch-deep stabilized gra, gravel base. The binder coat shall be installed with a minimum of three inches. The binder coat installed is above. The next 100 feet shall be constructed to subgrade and stabilize with a minimum of 12-inch clean washed aggregate stone with a gradation from two to six inches. This shall serve as a wash station for all vehicles exiting onto public ways. All vehicles exiting the site shall be inspected for mud on the tires and washed prior to exiting. The applicant should be responsible for providing sufficient water. If town water is used, immediate should be acceptable to the water department. The binder portion of Avon Lane as well as Lincoln Road where it meets Avon Lane shall be swept daily at the close of work. All export trucks exiting the site shall be equipped with dust covers to prevent discharge of airborne particles. Equipment refueling must occur outside the wetland buffer zone. The onsite processing of stone is included, which also includes crushing and sorting and washing. On-screen lome shall be allowed just for the stuff that's going to be reused on site. All stumps shall be removed from the site and disposed in accordance with local, state, and federal regulations. On-site grinding is prohibited. Safety signs shall be installed along Lincoln Road to warn vehicles traveling on Lincoln Road of construction traffic exiting. And all sites should be installed according with town regulations. The approval does not relieve the applicant of his obligation to obtain any other local, federal, state approvals for earth and material removals. The board has made no determination of the applicability of any other earth or removal regulations. Siltation barriers approved by the town engineer shall be installed at the limited disturb areas in the base of all slopes. Erosion measures must comply with the conservation. Siltation barriers should be maintained in good working order for the duration of project, and they should be inspected by the environmental monitor or weekly. Any exposed surfaces subject to wind erosion and the airborne transport of fine particles shall be stabilized with water, wetting agents, or other means. No slope at the end of the workday shall be left in a condition where the slope exceeds three feet horizontal to one foot vertical. Material stockpiles on the site should have siltation control barriers around the base of stockpile. Any stockpile to be maintained for a period of excess of 14 days should be lome and seeded to prevent erosion. If stockpiles are prone to discharge of airborne particles, they should be protected with either, with sea hay, erosion-controlled blankets, or other means to protect the particle transport. No slope shall be remained exposed for more than 14 days. Slope shall not exceed the gradient of three to horizontal to one vertical and shall be lome and seeded. Where stabilized vegetation cannot be established due to weather, growing conditions, they must be stabilized with erosion blankets, tackifiers, or other means. If hay is used for temporary stabilization of exposed surfaces, it shall be used in a limited to salt or sea hay. Field hay should not be used due to site potential to introduce invasive plant species to the site adjoining properties. The applicant shall maintain a log of all erosion materials being used, including the source and quantity, and upon completion of earth removal operations in the paved areas including Avon Drive from Lincoln, shall be inspected by the town and have authority to take any corrections. So, that was Mr. Gemma's recommendations, a lot of it parallels with what Carla said and also even what the police chief has said, so. Any, nothing? Okay. I guess. Any comment, or you all said?
I asked him. I was just asking.
I can't hear you though. I lost.
Well, you can get it, you're going to get a copy of it anyway. Yeah.
Well, I got everything settled, okay.
Basically, it's everything we've, we've talked about, but also, you know, the hours and everything else, but stabilizing things and having people monitor it and all that. There's nothing earth-shattering in here that, you know, this will be part of.
I thought it sounded okay.
Well, I should have made something up then. But you will have to be there nights and weekends, Mr. Truax. All right. I don't have any other things to read, and it sounds like you guys don't have anything, so I'll start this time with Paul. Do you have anything before I turn it open to the public?
No, Mr. Chair, not at this time.
Okay. Kate?
One point of clarification.
Coming your way, John, in a minute. Kate?
Carl, and maybe Mr. Gemma, if you could just clarify for me your comment number two on page three about the swell factor. Is that relevant? Is it a big difference? Is it, can you just clarify that for the layperson?
Yeah, so the soil materials in their natural condition are compact. When they're dug out and loaded into trucks, it, it's greater than its condition in the bank. The original calculations used a 15% swell factor, so if you dig 100 yards, it would load 115. The revised used a 12%. And there was no backup to it, but I did discuss it with Mr. Truax, and we reviewed some material that seemed to indicate that that was within normal. There can actually be calculations, geotechnical calculations. It varies on moisture, the types of materials that are in there, whether it's sand or mixed gravels or whatnot, and I'd be glad to have Mr. Gemma comment on it because I'm far from an expert on this, but I have a little bit of knowledge. So, anyway, he used a smaller swell factor, which essentially reduces the net amount of loads that need to go out. And it just about fits in a two-year span according to the calcs, and I reviewed the calcs, and I agree with him.
So, you agree with the swell factor used?
I do.
And when I analyzed the earthwork and, and we were developing these various profile comparisons, we didn't apply any swell factor because I just wanted to be able to compare apples and apples and not argue about whether it's 10% or 15% or 12%. So, because of the, you know, if, if Mr. Truax's numbers included a swell factor, his numbers are going to show a little bit higher for, for numbers, for soils leaving the site than mine would have. Mine would have been lower because I'd not apply a swell factor. But when I looked at his original profiles and then we looked at the revised profiles, we just looked at both of those without a swell factor, so it was an apples and apples comparison.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. So, you all say, you know, the swell factor.
No, I understood what a swell factor was. It was the percentage and the difference that I was more.
So, if you ever dig a hole in your yard, you can never get it all back in. Of course, the other thing is the swell factor could be 30% if you sell them by the yard. You fluff that up.
The swell factor is greater for like lome than it would be for the sands and gravel.
Right, because it's heavier.
And if you sell it by the pound or the ton, you got your hose there.
No, I get that whole thing. I was, I, I, I understand that. I was just questioning whether the 12 or the 15 was more accurate and if one was.
Yeah. Okay. Phil?
First, I just wanted to thank Mr. Gemma and also Carl for putting together all of the concerns and the list of recommendations that we should make. That gets very comprehensive, and I think we should, we're going to help alleviate some of our concerns that we've had, making sure that, that also is done in the safest way. I have a couple of questions. One is I, I know that you're going to do slopes three to one and not two to one. That was, but I don't, I didn't see that mentioned anywhere, that that was the goal. I don't, I don't know if you get, you're in that plan somewhere, or?
That's what's shown on the plan.
It's not shown on the plan. Okay. Okay, just to make sure of that. It's just hard to read that plan, by the way.
And I did mention somewhere in the letter.
Yeah.
I think I wrote this in the real one when we did the count. It was in a letter, I think.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure of that.
It did mention somewhere.
And, and then, you know, I'm glad to hear about the calculations, because I know that was one of the questions. So, it sounds like, Carl, you were good with that. Okay, so, that's all I have.
Okay. John?
I'm looking at comment 16 from Mr. Gemma's, and I think corresponds, others, four trips of vehicles per day. And that would be, now, a trip, is that just considered an exiting of the material? Is that correct?
Forty loads a day, correct.
Forty being taken out.
The truck's going to come in, and then it's going to leave.
Okay. So, and in reality, probably one truck will do several trips per day, is that, could be, okay?
Same truck, probably, yeah.
Okay. So, you have eight hours to work in, 480 minutes. All right, by 40 trips, so that's 12 minutes per trip. And that would include entering the lot, getting to where the loaders are, loading the truck, and then exiting the truck. Not having firsthand knowledge, what is the actual time it would take to load one of those trucks? Do you know?
They load the trucks in minutes. It's like a six or eight-yard bucket, and you're putting 25 yards in, so it's like four scoops.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's not as time-consuming as you might think.
Would you have two set of loaders if you needed it? Or one is?
Probably won't need it, right?
For you, Mr. Gemma, in my experience, when we worked up here, we had one loader, and the condition was 40 trucks a day, and for the most part, the operator's sitting around meeting a worker. Two would be.
Okay. Okay. 7:00 a.m., 3:00 p.m., eight hours, 12 trips. And then you'd have to factor in the trips. Okay. That's not an issue. I know we have the fire department's issue with the entrance and turning radiuses still. I guess I have no question, other questions at this time.
Okay. All right. Now, Rob, come back.
I'm going to go to the audience.
No. My turn. All right. The 40 trips is everything. It's lome, trees, whatever.
Yeah.
Because it's based upon what the dirt is now to where it's going. So, whatever's there, you've calculated per yard.
Correct.
Okay. So, I just want everybody to understand, it's just not gravel for 40 trips a day.
There'll be some lome going out, but majority will be used back on the sites.
Yeah, and you'll have, you have a lot of boulders going out at some junts.
Maybe not. Didn't hit any boulders digging holes up there.
Digging the 50 feet for the?
Sixty feet.
Yeah. There's always.
We didn't hit anything but sand.
All right. And based upon the fact that the recommendation is we're not going to do any mine operations, it's going to go right from the excavator into the truck?
Correct.
Or?
No screen, no, no processing.
I don't know screening, and it's just my experience, it will probably go into a pile so the loader can do it because you'd never keep up with the backhoe.
Correct.
But that doesn't matter. But the whole purpose is, once you dig, it's gone. It never touches the ground again.
Gone.
Okay. I just want everybody to understand that. That was my only comment after what John was alluding to, so I don't have anything else. Anybody in the audience, questions or comments? Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Brian Fogg from Iroquois County, representing the Walpole Sportsman's Association, pinch hitting for my colleague Dave McKay, who's off this week. You have our letter, I'm not going to rehash that in detail. Just wanted to hit on a couple of points of the club's concerns. As we stated previously, we believe this is a commercial gravel pit operation masquerading as a residential subdivision. That's a violation of the zoning bylaw. The amount of earth to be removed far exceeds an amount that could be reasonably considered incidental to a residential use. Most important to the club, two of the proposed lots, seven and eight, show the club's access driveway running right across the lots. I know the board doesn't want to get involved in a private ownership issue, but this is the sort of problem that gets to the board's decision on the layout of the lots. If unresolved, the board would be approving two residential lots that contain someone else's driveway. That seems like a problem waiting to happen. We're looking to the board to address these issues and these deliberations. We thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? I guess not. You're done? No, you're not quite done. We've still got the fire department.
Mr. Chair, Brian Almeida for the applicant. I'm happy to address the outstanding fire department issue. Just to sort of clarify, going back to the April 3rd comment letter of the fire department, they had asked that, they had requested that we provide a sweat path analysis, but as part of that letter, they indicate that the interior roads of Lincoln Estates don't fall under their purview. So, we did provide them that sweat path analysis, and as Mr. Truax mentioned earlier, there was some disagreement about the size of the truck. We'd suggest that the board should, if they're so inclined to vote tonight, to include a condition that the applicant will submit the sweat path analysis for the correct-sized truck, and that the, the fire department can then issue a comment letter with respect to that.
Okay, so if I understand that you're saying that you guys acknowledged it was a wrong truck?
Again, I, I spent most of my day reading through the letters from Kimley Horn. I think there's still some disagreement as to whether it was the same-sized truck, but...
Okay. As you know, Mr. Almeida, this board, we don't go out to departments just for giggles. We uphold them. If we didn't, there'd be no reason to do it. And this is public safety more than anything. So, I don't think you want to go down the road, say, yeah, just kind of do this. I don't know why it, 11th hour this was brought to them, and it really was 11th hour. Kind of tough going on Patriots' Day on a holiday to bring it over to the 15th, so. And he gets it this morning, and so he said, he looked at it quick. He hasn't had time to review the whole thing. So, now you submitted something else from Kimley Horn that's different than what he had before. Is that correct?
I don't necessarily agree with that. The letter that was submitted today was, I think, arguing about why the sweat path analysis that was previously submitted was correct based on the truck size. It wasn't a new sweat path analysis that was sent in today.
Well, he, all right, I'll read it again, very simple. The fire department, it's to you guys, you already have it, so put this for everybody here. Walpole Fire Department received your letter. We got a comment letter to the planning board dated February 26th. Although the interior roads fall under mass general laws, Lincoln Road does not fall under subdivision control. The fire department requests a sweat path analysis of apparatus entering and exit Avon Lane left to right. This will ensure mutual, our apparatus and mutual aid partners can safely negotiate these turns. And that was, that's what they said back, what's the date on this? April 3rd. So, they asked for it, ma'am, sorry, they asked for that on April 3rd, and the one he had today indicated he just got the plan. And that the first thing he found through his quick reading was the truck was wrong. So, it's been kicking around for a bit.
If I could, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I spoke, I spoke to Mr. Hoven today, and if I could back up a little bit, he had originally asked for an analysis of the entire subdivision. We pointed out to him that on the subdivision control, it's not required, the fire department does not have jurisdiction. I met with him today and asked him for a clean letter, and he had told me he would provide one for tonight, but he subsequently said he got tied up in a meeting. But the, the point is that he asked for an analysis of the truck entering from Lincoln, but it's a request. It's not a requirement. On Doobie Street, the fire marshal informed, informed Mr. Barry that they can't require these things, they can make recommendations. On Doobie Street, the fire marshal informed, informed Mr. Barry that they can't require these things, they can make recommendations. But we provided the analysis to him and, and talking about the truck, whether it's forty feet or forty foot three inches or forty foot six inches, we'd be glad to work it out with him, but the point is, is that the analysis in its entirety is a request by him, not a requirement by him.
I don't, I don't, you, John, I have no reason, I don't know one way or another, but I don't have anything other than this letter. So, that's where we sit today, and, you know, had this gone a little quicker, okay, I'll, we'll ask the, the big question, what took so long to get it to him?
I answered him immediately, as soon as I guess things would turn around as quickly as possible, the delay is not on our part.
This was given to him April fifteenth, Monday.
It was given to him as a subsequent letter, we had given him stuff back when we submitted. He replied on April third, he revised his letter, we resubmitted it again on Tuesday of this week to him.
Okay, April third, April fifteenth, that's two weeks.
It's the same time to get things.
It's my understanding that just like we have a fourteen day rule, they have a ten day rule. So I don't understand why we're even talking about it this week. I, and I don't understand how anyone who's been before the Walpole Planning Board doesn't take care of public safety first right away, because it's, we've denied projects because of it. We never vote against public safety. I've only been here six and a half years, but we have never voted against public safety. So I don't understand why ever it would be left until the end. It's, it should be the first thing that's done.
We can only reply, we move as quickly as we can when we see these things, we try to turn them around in a day or a week, but I'm getting things from him at the last minute. Delay is not on our, on our...
I can read it again, Thursday morning, April eighteenth, today, you got a multi-page submission from Kimley Horn, today. And he said he didn't have time to review it, but aside from that, he did say that we all, there's no dispute, you got the wrong ladder truck, right?
I, I don't know that.
Well, that's what he said.
That's what he said.
That's what Rob alluded to earlier.
He said that.
Scully's been using something from years ago, so maybe they got a bigger...
Same truck, we've been using, he's been using it the last four or five years, and recent ones, I don't know. We're getting a fine truck.
We get one every week.
I mean, he could've got a new truck, I don't know, there could've been one a while, a couple of years, I don't know.
All right.
A hundred and twenty days.
No, not that, they, they're gonna give us, when do we have to, we get, whatever it was, ninety days?
Can I just interrupt you for a minute, on February twenty-sixth, the deputy chief gave the right truck. Everything is here, this, the whole thing is here, there's even a picture of the truck.
And that was forward to the traffic consultant.
And that was February twenty-sixth, and today is April eighteen.
Right, and I think our traffic consultant is saying we have the truck he used within an inch, within a couple of inches.
Well, it, it's, it's not the same truck, it's within a couple of inches, but, all right, going back, Kate?
I'm sorry?
We got a time here?
No.
When's it, when, when are we dead?
On September...
No, no, forget the hundred and twenty, we have to go by the ninety days once it's filed.
Okay, we're out of time.
Right.
We need an extension.
All right. What do you wanna do there, boys?
Put in your extension, Mr. Jim.
We get this answered, seems to be the only thing, if we get an extension, next time you come in, it's done.
Wouldn't you try a frame?
I have to count it out again, I was thinking it was a hundred and twenty days, but it's ninety.
We have, yeah, we have a hundred and twenty days to report to court, but we gotta go by the regular deal.
I can just, we have ninety days from the date of the application.
That's what I'm going with.
That was filed January thirty-first.
Yeah.
So ninety, uh...
No, it was filed later.
Application was fully filed and accepted on January thirty-first.
When did they file?
We have, we gotta file a status report with a hundred and twenty.
Twenty days, yeah.
The decision needs to come out within ninety days, it's the second page of the...
That's the end of April.
So when, what are you saying, Tom?
You have ninety days, so that, that's gonna be the end of April, unless the parties mutually agree, we have to refile the status report. If the parties mutually agree, we'd request additional time.
Yeah.
What do you think, Chair?
May second.
May second.
Can I work around your vacation schedule? It's gonna be tough. What's on that state, Kate?
May second.
May second.
May second is fine.
We need extension. Do you want extension? Yeah, so do it to the end of May, just in case something happens.
He's gonna write one up.
We're just gonna, we're just waiting to get information from the fire department, correct?
As it stands now, Rob, everything, there's nothing I got here.
But I mean, we're not waiting for anything else, we're just gonna get that from him, we're gonna go forward.
I guess.
Okay.
You're not filing anything more other than the fire department, right?
No, not unless, no. Okay, they're gonna argue about the truck size.
Truck's getting bigger.
Okay. May second.
All right, whoa, whoa, we need an exten, extension, but there's one other thing that the board is gonna talk about, and we should do it now, is, it appears that it's usually up to the planning board to extend something to the cul-de-sac, right?
Oh, at the end?
Yeah. It appears that the abudders, the gun club, doesn't want it. So, and we only do that if there's landlocked property, which is necessary too, and if the abudder doesn't want it, why would we force it upon them, and why would we make you do it?
We don't care.
So, so, but before I speak, before I kill it, I just wanna get this from the gun club members before I become a clay target for saying the wrong thing.
We're okay with the utility easement aspect of it, but not the access easement, that, that doesn't work at all.
All right. All right, does everybody understand, does, Kyle, there's no big deal for you either, right?
No.
We would leave it, relabel it as a utility easement, not access.
If, and, and I don't know, do you need the full forty-six feet and the grading easements if it's utility?
No.
Typical utility.
That's what it is, right, it's gonna stick and shoot it through the hill.
It does.
What do we do, twenty feet, Kyle, typical?
Yeah, I'd probably make it thirty, but anyway.
All right.
I think it's forty, fifty now, right, forty-six, so we wanna shrink it to thirty?
The road's forty-six.
We could put, you, you can make that in the decision, and we'll put it on the final plan.
You want me to do your final plan for you?
Yeah, 'cause I'm not gonna submit anything between now and May second.
Okay, so, I just wanna make sure everybody understands, we're gonna get rid of the cul-de-sac at the end, and all they want is a utility easement, so in the future, if there's any issues up there...
Well, you're not getting me the cul-de-sac, you're just getting me to that extension.
Getting rid of the extension of the right-of-way easement that goes on.
Going beyond the cul-de-sac.
Going beyond, yeah.
Beyond the cul-de-sac, yeah.
So right now, we show a forty-six easement, wide access and utility, so we reduce that to thirty? Is that what you're recommending, Kyle?
We could leave it at forty-six, that would be plenty of room if you ever wanted to run a line through there or whatever it is.
Just relabel it as access, I mean, as a utility easement.
Okay, you can do that, so you don't, you don't have to do that much drawing.
Right.
Keep your life simple.
I would agree with that.
Now, then it, then, now that it's be determined it will benefit us, it'll benefit the town.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, does everybody understand?
Yeah. So it'll be accepted in the Form J then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, fair enough.
That's done. You're gonna give a extension, so I can make the vote, May thirty-first, what do you got?
He's gonna work with Mr. Lane and write it up.
All I gotta do is, tell us what date, tell us May thirty, thirtieth.
May first.
May seventeenth.
All right, we do it at the end of the month, just in case, John, because you're gonna get the thing written and everything else.
May thirty.
All right, make a motion to accept the applicant's request to extend through May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
May second.
Second, second Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, next, he's gotta get his little fire department.
May second, we have El Sarabi at seven oh five, that's it, and no call that night.
No call that night?
Or June second.
All right, May second, I know you guys are always around, Italy, Florida, what? On May second?
Over here.
You're telling me how overworked and poor you are, okay?
That's why.
Why are we doing before, since we got one issue, 'cause also...
Seven oh four.
Yeah, we'll do it seven oh four on May second. 'Cause we have one at seven oh five, it's all brand new, so we don't wanna belabor it, all right? Seven oh four on May second, all right, see you then, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
What? You and Loeb?
Avoidance spring break.
I'm gonna look at the street face and say that the, it's a recommendation. Are you freaking kidding me?
They're gonna keep doing it. I mean... But to me, what do you, why would you do, uh...
Are we signing?
Yeah.
What's the name of the new company?
Truax Engineering.
Do you want, either people out there that wanna... Got a hold of it?
Truax Engineering Group should always make sure public safety signed off.
Group, I got a group.
That's what I was just gonna say, you said group.
You would, group, me, myself, and I.
Who are you pointing people?
That's it. I'm going carp and fishing, that's me.
You go what?
Carp and fishing.
Wait, now Florida?
Family, it's the six of us.
All I've heard was, oh, I work too hard, I don't have any money, or...
No other reason to downsize, so I can do what I'm doing. 'Cause I, I checked with the boss, he just seems wrong. Thank you.
First item of business, next item up, we have an A and R for Summer Street. There's somebody. Let's, let's hope we don't have any scriviness error. And what, I know it meets it, 'cause you didn't change anything on, what do you call it, on, on... Summer Street, right?
What was that, sorry?
The, the frontage still, nothing's changed for frontage-wise, right?
No, just two different parcels being put together.
You're combining them?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They were once separated and another being combined again.
Not, I don't wanna belabor it, but it's all under one ownership, right?
It will be, yes.
But it is now, right?
Uh, no, it's two separate, we're gonna be buying the property soon.
You can buy the whole thing?
Yeah.
Oh, but typically they merge anyway when you hold both of them, but...
Yeah.
Okay, you just want it clean.
Well, can they combine them if they're, they're in separate, right now, they're in separate ownership, they can't combine them.
Let me double check.
Are they in separate right now?
Yes.
I might be wrong, yeah, no, sorry, I'm, I might be wrong, I, um...
That's now a form.
Well, they might have bought the whole both of them, and now you, who owns the whole parcel right now, you guys own everything?
I think I most spoke, yes, we do own everything now, we're closing on our loans separately later on, that was what I'm confused about.
We had them put the owner information on, Mr. Chair, it, it's up above, about center. And they, it looks like it's Fairfield Summer Street LLC owns both lots, under two different title references.
John's question's answered, it's owned by both. Yep, so now, once they bought it all, they all wanna make it one. You got no issues, right, Kyle?
No, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, whatever. They got the, they got the frontage, they don't got the area anyway. But they don't have to...
LM?
Yeah. All right, make a motion to endorse an A and R?
Second.
Second, Katie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained?
Aye.
You abstain, John?
No, I, I say aye.
John's an aye, five zero. Okay, I'll go this way. Are you here for the company?
No, I'm... Yeah.
Paying you for this? If they are, we'll say we got done about one tomorrow.
Yeah, exactly. I'll take an extra hour off later.
Yeah, roll in tomorrow, I was there all night.
They kept me all night.
We're gonna give this to you, and you're gonna give us prints back, right?
Three copies.
We're in.
Yep, yeah.
I'm pretty good.
Is there a locus up there?
No.
No.
I'm just trying to figure out where it was. Summer Street, Summer Street.
Just for one second, before you pull it off.
Will you stay that way, so I didn't have to back your memory, I know it might be here at home, right?
Don't you, can I give you these, Mr. Lane?
I got this paperclip.
Explain your elastic or something, you don't have...
Paul, give her yours.
Your elastic.
Sure, I just pull it from the back of my head.
Thomas, thank you very much.
All right.
Have a good night.
All right, next thing on is Kirsage.
Kirsage is not ready.
It's not ready?
No, um, Jack's pretty much... This, this has been in the show for Kirsage. They gave me, they sent me my lives after the conservation approval, and I explained to them that they, if they changed anything, we had to determine, you know, what it was that changed, and if they needed to come back for a major or minor modification. So, here we are.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, after the approval on November fourteenth, we took the project to the Conservation Commission for a land disturbance permit. Part of their process was to complete some soil testing in the area of the retention basin, and after that was done, there were three minor changes requested on the plan set, which I can just quickly describe. So, the first change to the plan set itself is just identifying or showing the soil test pit locations, so they were added to the plan, so that's just as a record. The soil test pit work revealed the need to slightly raise the height of the installment of retention basin, just because of water level in that area, so the change made here was to just raise the perimeter, if you like, the lower perimeter of the retention basin, so there was some other work, no change. raise the perimeter, if you like, the lower perimeter of the retention basin, same was in the local work, no change. So that's category one, so just adjustment to the stormwater retention basin, revised all the recorded calculations were provided to the town engineer, and they will review and approve as part of this. The second request that was made was just to show on the plan how, how we would access the stormwater retention basin for any maintenance or service, and so we added to the plan an indication of the access routes that we would use to get down to the stormwater retention basin, and they reviewed and approved by COMCOM. One of those involved putting a gate in the fence that had already been part of the plan set. And the third request of COMCOM was just to add some additional trees in this area of the fence, so we added some additional trees. So they're shown on Plan one zero two, and in terms of the overall planning path, the final request was just to provide an expanded view of the contours in this area, the entire scale, so we added two more plans. The plans that, so the plans that came out as plans tip number two oh one and two oh two that weren't in the original site plan pack, but they just showed a higher resolution, what's on this page here.
Okay. Now, have we, have you given the plan board the plan yet?
So we've provided the planning, the plan set to pay, and also printed milars based on these changes.
Okay, we just got that, what, the other day, Kate?
Yeah.
I haven't received any milars.
Okay.
I received milars, um, a bit ago, I'm sorry?
There wasn't a way back, and they told you to hold them?
Yeah, and they told me, but then I got an email from, um, on March fourteenth from Rob.
The captain's there.
Said, the milars have already gone out, so please disregard them when you get them, that's the only ones I have, they told me to disregard.
There should be another sample of the, yes.
And I have not gotten them.
It sounds like I did get them to you.
So I did not receive, Kyle, did you receive them? No, no, I did not.
All right, well, the process is somewhat simple, we're gonna need them, to us.
Yeah, for us, yeah.
Then we're gonna have to take a look at them, we'll, Kyle will be part of it, and, because the site plan, we gotta determine if it's a major minor, so we can do that over the next couple of weeks. If it's a minor, you just say, we wanna do this a minor, and it gets approved. If it's deemed a major, you do the re-advertising, so. But, that can be determined, we'll let you know which way it goes, and we get the plans, and review them.
Okay, so these plans were submitted a number of weeks ago, this plan set with these changes was submitted a number of weeks ago for the board for tonight, following, I think, Kate, your request.
For us to deny?
Sorry, say that again, please?
The, the, these plans, these modified plans were submitted.
By email?
Yeah, some time ago, and.
They went to Kyle, actually.
They went to Kyle.
Yeah, we need this, regular set. What's the latest date of revision date?
So, uh.
Go past nine.
So revisions per, on this one, there are revisions per town comments.
Yeah, but the final one, that's gonna be the one we.
Yeah, that was, yeah, four fifteen, twenty twenty-four.
What was the date?
Four fifteen.
April fifteen.
All right, so, that was Monday, okay, so.
We don't have that one yet, yeah?
Correct, make these plans were sent.
We, yes, we ordered copies two days ago to come to the town.
Okay, well, we have got them here, okay.
Were they overnighted or something, were they?
I'm not too sure.
Can you put in there, so there's no confusion, uh, what do you call it, transmittal?
Transmotional.
What you're looking for, so we have the official thing, and we can take it from there, 'cause what happens, once these things go around the world, nobody knows what's up, so, all right?
Where'd you get them? I checked at five o'clock tonight.
I think they snuck them in on us.
I, I honestly, I got them at five o'clock tonight, and they were not here.
I heard Kyle walk upstairs.
Yeah, he probably had them.
All right, we got them, so, we'll take a look and let you know, um.
We need two weeks, right?
Yeah, well, that's starting now, we've had them, so, so for the next meeting, we can let you know.
Okay, so, so when would that next meeting?
May second.
May second.
May second, so we'll put you.
May second.
We'll give you an appointment, if we give you an appointment, you don't have to wait like this.
Okay, great, thanks.
Seven oh three?
Seven oh three?
Yeah, seven oh three will be these guys on Walston, Alwasabi. Yeah, all right, so.
And, and if the, if it's determined to be minor, would, would we potentially have them endorsed that evening, the milars?
Are we doing it to endorse, or you're doing it to major minor?
We're doing it to see if it's a major minor, and then what we've done in the past, if it's a minor, you do it that night.
Oh, great, okay. I think, Kyle, you've reviewed the plans.
Do we have an application, Kate, that needs to go with us?
It's just a request to endorse.
All right, and they've already done that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, see you in a couple of weeks.
Sorry, I honestly, I can't believe they would do that.
Just to confirm that from an Eric's standpoint, though, you had reviewed the plans for the question.
Uh-oh, Kyle's gonna go to jail for this.
So, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Kyle Baldwin, the town engineer on the other side of the table right now, I generally recuse, recuse myself from this, 'cause I have involvement with the county. However, and the assistant town engineer handled all the review, testing, everything that went on, that, that this gentleman talked about. With Chris Johnson on vacation, I was the conveyancer of a little bit of last-minute information here on these things, and obviously, I found the plan, so that's about it. But as far as I know, the items were addressed.
Okay. All right, so you guys, couple of weeks?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, CB, what are you doing? He's done. Are you gonna get up here like you're part of the audience? You want?
So, both of these references are the same thing?
The milars?
Yeah. Milars and.
Now, Kyle, Kyle's got big doings, big, big doings.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, so the last item is to discuss exactly what you were, were just talking about now, and the endorsement of plans and printing them on milars. I understand that's been long tradition here, probably from the days when the plans were reproduced on Blue Line. That stuff hasn't been done in years, so I'd just like to ask that the policy be changed, and that applicants be allowed to submit endorsement sets on paper. You will endorse it in paper.
For site plan?
Uh, for site plans. It will not change with, with, certainly won't with A and Rs, and I don't think it's gonna change with subdivisions.
All right, now I get you.
All right, but just for site plans, because the site plans aren't recorded, there's no need for the milar.
I thought it was a whole deal.
And I've got at least three or four of the people that do work commonly with us are, would be very happy to see this change, and it's actually beneficial. They're easier to scan on paper, and they reproduce better, et cetera. So I just wanna go over that policy and have the board make a vote on that, that, if you need to make a vote, and.
Can we have linen instead?
I, I think even the land court's given up on linen, Mr. Chairman, you can't even get it anymore. So.
So this is the site plan?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, probably, it shouldn't make a difference to us, I don't, anybody care?
No.
Okay.
Excellent.
Yeah, so we'll just, is it, what's it saying, it doesn't even say milars in this submission?
No, it doesn't, we checked on that.
It just went along with what we've been doing, everything else.
I think so.
Okay, all right, no, they don't have to.
Okay, very good.
And I would still like to see us get PDFs, that's something we, we still need to figure out, you know, how to get PDFs online, so we get them.
Yeah, we should ask when they send it in.
And I know we're getting PDFs, it's the next step, of getting them accessible.
I agree, and I'm particularly trying to chase down the PDFs of the endorsed set, because to me, that's the most important set. But anyway, we're gonna attempt to do that, and we can certainly ask.
Yeah, 'cause we always ask for them, but they should come through. Now, the guys who didn't wanna do milars anymore, right?
At least four.
All right, then. Milars or PDFs, take your pick. All right?
Both.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, oh, we go to paper now? Cover PDF?
Yeah, we, no, we shouldn't have any trouble getting the PDFs, although we seem to. If it's a small set, we run them ourselves.
No, I understand, but I, what I, what I'm saying, Kyle, is, everybody does it on CAD or whatever it is now, so everything should be on a PDF, so all they're doing is just sending what they got.
Yeah, they do accept, and we don't have any trouble getting, it's the signature that requires, that, that creates the issue, and so basically, you've gotta take an original and scan that, they can't just convert it.
And what I'm saying is, when they submit it, we should just get the PDF, so we can all sit at the computer and look at it.
We should.
Yeah, not for the file. We can always scan them in here.
We can, but I'd like to, I'd like to encourage the applicants, once you sign, to give us a PDF.
We'll put it in the condition.
Okay. Actually, we should have been doing that a long time ago.
I know Maggie did, but.
Can I ask a question before we adjourn?
Where's Maggie?
So, I don't know if this is for Phil or for the group or who, but, so I got an email today from Phil. We're having, having a master plan steering committee meeting, and I was thrown by that, because I thought the master plan steering committee had completed their task. So, I don't know if I asked Phil that, if I asked the group that.
We're not on the master plan, so it'll be us five here, or four, or eight.
Yeah, I would have brought it up tonight, but then I realized that the master plan wasn't on the agenda, that's, so that was, so, so I don't wanna speak about it, about it being on the agenda. But I can talk to you offline if you want, Kate.
Okay.
I did want to have one, two requests, though, for things on the agenda. If we could put the master plan on the agenda for next meeting, and then also, Jack, I think we should put on the agenda at some point, a review of our rules and regulations for subdivisions, to take a look at them. I, I think I've heard various times, there may be some things we might wanna change, I'm wondering whether we should take a look at that and see.
You can do that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, say that again.
The next time, master plan and subdivision rules and regs, look, see.
Discussion?
Yeah, whatever.
And maybe we have a couple of people take a look at it, and, and, or, you know, whatever, whatever the board decides, but that would be my, my suggestion.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, no.
All in favor of going home? Something else?
So moved. Second.
Aye, aye.
Aye.